I'd like to call meeting order.
How many?
If we could stand to the lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have no visitors signed in wishing to speak. In terms of board committees, Mr. Bevel, you give an update on the audit committee?
Yeah, we had a audit committee meeting last week. Actually, we caught up. We were, we've been together for a few years. So, we're seeing a plan that went through 23 and 24. Went well. And it actually helped us with our budget action plan with the life as well. That's the five things that we do.
Great. I will report out, we had a capital committee meeting just prior to this meeting. We were here for about two and a half hours going through our capital project and where we stand. And so, as you may be, you know, you're aware, we passed the voters pass of 68-plus million-dollar capital project for us. With the escalating costs, since we passed this budget, our $68 million now cost-wise is coming in at $100 million. So, we have pared down, you know, the project, keeping, or looking at pairing down the project and keeping, you know, some of the main focus items such as the addition at Windermere for the pre-K program, the turf complex and things. So, we have, we're still going through the entire project. We had a meeting with our, the financial consultant we use, looking at how, what the impact will be on the taxpayers, how much of money, our different things like maximum cost allowance, different things that can be, staymate can be put to it. So, we're reviewing all that. We're coming back in another month or two because the costs right now are based on, what, 60% is it plans?
Yep.
And there'll be 90% plans. So, we should have a much stronger idea of where things are in a couple of months and then can see really where cuts and things need to be made. So, more to come from that. And I think we have another committee report.
Yes, that's from the diversity, equity and inclusion committee. We met again on June 11th, brought our three different groups back together to look again at the strategic plan. We provided some input from our different sections to each other and we plan to come and present to the Board of Education on August 6.
Great. Any other reports? Go right to the superintendent's floor.
Great. It's great to see so many people here tonight. Thank you for coming. I know you're all here for the fun balance and reserves report. So, we'll start with that, which is...
Rock, scud.
Oh, okay. We'll start with the retiree recognition, which is always, you know, sort of a night of mixed emotions, I think, for all of us. It's mixed emotions for us because we're losing a lot of great people through the retirement process, which is not great for our children or our school district, but it's also a wonderful new chapter in your lives that I know you're looking forward to and I'm glad that you're able to move into that next chapter because we all look forward to that when we get towards the end of our careers. So, congratulations to you on your retirement. And I have, what happened?
Lisa has got her stuff outside and she's the retirees.
Oh! Look, I don't, I can clear a room, but I love that I said that at that point. So, I have some of my administrative team here to help me honor our retirees. I'm going to start with our PPS staff, which is Stu Christie and Leslie Barr. So, I would invite Maria Otto up here as well as Mr. Pigeon to help me honor our two retirees and the PPS staff.
Yeah, I do. It's like super surreal to be out here because I don't know if anyone knows this, but Stu was my mentor. So, you can blame him. I'm trying to think about what to say, but truly, like, those of you that don't know Stu, he's an amazing human. He knows every route in this area, probably any area. You could just name the route number, which is just an interesting talent. I picked the sunflowers intentionally and actually I think he's intentionally for both of my friends because I saw this quote and it just made me think of both of you. So, it says, "Sometimes you find people who have sun inside them. It's not just their smile, but their entire presence." I'm sorry. I love you. Just brightens your world. We have an internal being that shines so bright, it feels like someone warming your soul. When I see the two of you, that's exactly what I think. So, thank you Renee and Jonathan for landing our sheer people. They have made a difference and we're gonna miss them so much.
I think we're gonna go first then. I think it's, I think confirmed by Mr. Bellisle that it's a relatively rare occasion when a school psychologist retires. We have one that decided to move into administration, another one moved into administration. So, it's been some 25 years since a school psychologist retired from this district. And if you know what a school psychologist does, you're an insider to education. But it is a critically, critically important role in schools. They do a lot of great work and Stu has done it so, so, so well. He has the perfect balance of human relation skills and expertise. It shows at the table. You know, he's really left a legacy in the district. His insight, his wisdom, his force sense has guided many of Tiger in the right direction. And it's some very important, very important work, the legacy that you're gonna leave in this district. He's charted just, if you know the nature of the business, it's a challenging business because you're dealing with students that have special needs and they need special ideas and supports and they need a good path. And Stu always provided really an expert path. I know I speak for myself that Stu was also just personal counsel to all of us. How many times have you seen a colleague say, "I wonder what Stu thinks?" I can't tell you how many times I walked from my office to his office to get the Stuart Christie tape on things. And it was, you know, always enriching to me and he always had such wonderful advice. So, Stu, on the occasion of your retirement, know that your work has been recognized and has made a tremendous difference in the lives of our Tigers. So, congratulations to you, sir.
This is really my first time, I've never had a better half.
I just wanted to add Julie couldn't be here. I think it's orientation maybe. But she obviously wanted to extend a lot of kind words about Leslie. Leslie and I have crossed paths in a lot of different ways. She is such a leader in our district. She has had such a huge role with our diversity, equity and inclusion work that is ongoing. I know we're gonna be tapping her. We're so happy that she's gonna be able to spend time with her grandkids. That was the one thing she told us when we asked her what her plans were. She wasn't talking, I mean, she traveled a little, but it was mostly like she just wants to spend time with her babies, which is so appropriate because that's your life's work is cultivating our babies. So, we're glad you're gonna be doing it with your closest loved ones.
And we're getting an opportunity to say a few words. So, I'll let you know that ahead of time in case you weren't planning on having a speaking role. You certainly don't have to, but Mrs. Flanagan did send something open for me to share on your behalf, Leslie. She said Leslie has been the school social worker at Windermere for her entire career. She was a master at communication and worked incredibly well with parents and children, supporting them when in need. Leslie would often be seen rushing to someone's aid or allowing a safe supportive space for her students. She was a master at showing kindness and respect. She was a passionate advocate for culturally responsive practices and equal opportunities for all individuals. Treated people with respect was evident in everything that she did. No doubt, her shoes will be tough to fill and we wish her the best in retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Do you want to come up and say a few words? Leslie. Come on up.
Not that I'm prepared or anything.
Congratulations.
Well, I first want to say thank you for honoring me with your kind words and sentiment. They let me know that I have made a difference during my time in this district and I fulfilled my professional goal, which has been to make a difference in the lives of others. So, I want to say thank you. My and her Central School District family, which includes Mr. Penella, the Board of Education and my Windermere Boulevard school team. Thank you for the blessing of working alongside of you all for over 20 years to promote the academic, the social, emotional, behavioral and culturally responsive health and wellbeing of our students. My thoughts and prayers continue to be with you, my Amherst Central School District family. My prayers for your wellbeing and your success in pressing on to using the tool of education to prepare our students to engage, thrive and... The word that I'm looking for, engage, thrive and contribute in a diverse cultural society. Many blessings to my fellow retirees and thank you to my husband Jonathan for your love and unwavering support. Thank you.
I know you're gonna spend a lot of time with those grandbabies and the last time we talked, it's in Tennessee. Is that still the case?
Yes, Tennessee.
Many trips to Tennessee. There are be positive ones. Congratulations. I think Southwest was now doing direct to Nashville. Stu, if you'd like to say a few words, you're certainly welcome to.
Thank you all for letting me play in the sandbox with you. One of the things that I always tell the kids is, don't be afraid to make a mistake because that's when you learn. If you're doing something or you don't know how to do it, you're just practicing. But if you're making a mistake, you have an opportunity for it. So, you know, always put your best foot forward. I learned a lot. Thank you all very much.
I'm sure that wood shop will be pretty active in the coming years.
It sure will be.
Yeah. I'll be putting a few orders. But I'd like to now welcome Mr. Lonzac up here to honor our middle school retirees. We have more retirees that were able to attend tonight. Unfortunately, the middle school retirement party that the faculty and staff is putting on for colleagues happened to fall on the same night tonight. I think they're serving up all of that.
Frankie Fimo's in North Town. Alana Dev and I just came from there, actually. Yeah, good evening. We'll start, can I have Deb Figur come on up, please? Let's give Deb a round of applause. For those of you that don't have the pleasure of knowing Deb Figur, she is a longtime educator, going back over 30-plus years in her career educating students, still at that last nine and change of those. She's worked with us here as a special teaching assistant in her self-contained 1-3 program here at Amherst Middle School. A very special room, a room that I always walk into and feel welcome. And Deb's a major reason for that. So, we're here again to celebrate her remarkable career, specifically here the last nine years and change in Amherst. Deb, you've been a pillar of support and kindness in that program. You are always willing to go above and beyond for your students who need a kind nurturing touch and you provide that to them. Again, we are very grateful for that. Your empathy, your patience, your love, they create that nurturing environment that make our Amherst Central School District and specifically our special education department one of the best in the area. So, again, your presence has been a blessing. We're going to miss you. You've touched many lives with the kindness, compassion and the incredible spirit that you have here in our district. So, as you embark on this new journey, which again is, you know, spending time with grandbabies or seeing a trend here, we wish you nothing but the best. She's already told us she's willing to come back and sub. So, I'm gonna start. It's in the days on the calendar, so we haven't seen the end of it yet. But thank you from the bottom of all of our collective hearts for your many years of service. May your retirement be filled with joy and grandbabies. So, all the best to you.
And you're certainly welcome to say a few words.
When I started my career, it was in elementary education and I never thought that I would end it in special education. But I'm so glad I came here because I started at St. Leo's and when it closed, I was like, now what do I do? And when I started here, I was a personal, personal aide and then I just worked my way up. And I'm so glad I got to spend the last nine and plus years here. Thank you.
And another longtime Amherst Middle School retiree from food service, Anna Elsasser. Any one of them? Anna, we're gonna miss you tremendously. For those of you that have not had the pleasure of knowing Anna, she started back in Amherst in the year 2003. She came on in our food service department as a substitute, working in Windermere, I believe. I have that right? Yeah, started in Windermere where you became an integral part of our team. From your early days as a food service helper and a backup cook at Windermere, up until 2018, you were very important to us. You then started, and Anna started at our Amherst Middle School cafeteria in the 2018 school year, where she has finished up career here with not one, not two, but three standing ovations from our students. They gave her a shout out, three standing ovations. She is beloved here with our students. She knows every student by name. She makes them feel welcome at her register. She greets them and provides them with the food nourishment that they need to be successful, not just during lunch, but also during breakfast hours. It's got a very important role in there with students every day to brighten their day, to pick them up. And they have a pulse in food service on our students as good as any department in our district. So, again, Anna, your kindness, your personal touch, please know they've made a significant impact on the lives of our students. Again, you're a constant source of positivity. You care for all of them. You make our cafeteria and our school a better place. Again, as you embark on retirement, we wish you nothing but the best. And again, we express our gratitude for your many years of service, two decades. You're going to be surely missed, but again, I know we'll see you around. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Just thank you, everything. It's been fun. The kids really keep you on your toes. You guys all know that. So, there were good days, there were bad days. COVID was tough for us. We made lunches, served them out the back door. Whatever, whatever we had to do, we did, we got them and they had no idea. Tracy ordered one day watermelons. She was gonna do it per family. She ordered one for every kid. She had like 300 watermelons. She could just take a watermelon, take a watermelon. So, but yeah, it was challenging, but thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Penella mentioned we have three faculty members retiring, could not be here this evening, but longtime pillars at Amherst Middle School, Stephen Hen, phys ed teacher and lacrosse coach, founder of that program is retiring this year. Ms. Courtney Kelly, a longtime health teacher here at Amherst Middle School. And Mr. Carrots, an alum of Amherst Central School District and a longtime technology shop teacher. So, we're losing some big pillars at Amherst Middle School. I'd like to just acknowledge those three individuals as well.
You certainly can relate to good days and bad days. But out of curiosity, was Watermelon Day a good one or a bad one?
You gotta cut the watermelon.
I, excuse me for one second. So, I have the pleasure of honoring our Windermere retirees. As we have previously mentioned, Mrs. Flanagan is welcoming our new crop of kindergarten parents to Windermere tonight for the orientation program. But she sent over a script for me to stick to and said, "Don't deviate from it." So, I will stick to the script. I'll first start with something that probably should have done a few years ago. Lisa made us aware that we never honored her or we forgot to honor her during the pandemic for her 25 years of service. So, we have, in recognition of your 25 years of service, a token of our appreciation for your service. So, congratulations on that. And moving right along, we're gonna honor you for your retirement. So, Julie said, "Lisa has been a dedicated kindergarten teacher for many years. She has worked tirelessly to ensure her young students are supported, loved and engaged in meaningful instruction. Lisa would often be seen working very late hours at school. Many times when I would be walking to my car at the end of the day, I would see her working in her classroom, preparing for the next day. She was highly organized and always prepared. Lisa has also given a lot of her time to support many of the PTA and after-school events. She was given, she has given her heart and soul to her job and we will miss her warm smile and compassion on a daily basis. Congratulations on your retirement and you will be missed by many." I'm bringing home the hardware tonight. This is for the retirement. And then, sure, you know what? Why don't you say a few words? Thank you.
My speech, I'm ready to say my speech at my retirement party, so I'll just share like a little part of it. But just to share with you, kind of exciting, I went to college at Allegheny University and my father is Brazilian, so he always had like goals for us and I was going to be a lawyer. So, I went to school and I did a lot of law briefs. I did internships in Washington DC and I took, all my electives were in education and I loved all my electives in education. So, I remember I did a hands-on center and I was talking to my dad about it. He's like, "Why are you doing all these classes in education?" But my hands-on centers, I just loved everything I did in education. And after I did that internship, I was just like, "This is not where I see myself being." And I even had Anna's daughter in kindergarten. Remember that? Anna was awesome. But kindergarten, it's such a special place to be. Right in today, when Leslie, or Julie Flanagan said, "I need four teachers to do this program, to work with preschoolers and just to be their teacher and just do a little bit, a little bit like a morning meeting, a meeting greet, small activity." And I was talking to Mike McCartney, he's like, "You are nuts. You are retiring this time." And I said, "You know what? I wanna do it. I wanna be those preschoolers. I wanna be part of that." And I know I will always step into my role of being a teacher because I love it so much. My dad came full circle when he, my father was an anesthesiologist at Kemmer Mercy. And I'll never forget, he's always like, "You could have been a lawyer. You would have been a great lawyer." And then nurses at Kemmer Mercy were like, "We are so excited to go," I was teaching at Smallwood, "to Smallwood School. Do you know what an amazing teacher your daughter is?" And then all of a sudden, my father's like, "Wow, you're at a Blue Ribbon School? I can't believe..." So, it's so funny. It took my father just like learning about our district and seeing my passion because I love teaching. And when my father stepped into my classroom, it was truly amazing. It was truly amazing to see my dad in that classroom. He was really excited for me. My father and my mother are not here and also my late husband, but I just want to share with you, they were my biggest supporters and they would be so proud and honored. My husband was so ecstatic and he kept saying, "Oh, my God, you can't teach our kids, so we have to find a district that's better than Amherst." And to be honest, I wish my kids came here because it is truly an amazing school, gifted teachers. The part I'm gonna miss is you, the teachers, the board, the support, Tony, how understanding you are. Lynn, we can talk to you about anything in kindergarten, any of our concerns, Lynn is there. Lynn will sit down with us, talk to us, brainstorm with us. That's an amazing district. I have so many friends that are teachers. That doesn't happen at other districts. We are so honored and blessed to teach in this district and to have the support, the kindness. Angelina, who's gonna be part of our kindergarten team next year, she's amazing. We get the most amazing teachers and we have the best support. So, it's really hard to step away from it because it's such a passion and we love what we do. But the most important part is you, the people. And that's what I'm gonna miss because it's truly amazing and I'm so proud to say I'm an Amherst teacher and now I'm gonna say I'm a retired Amherst teacher. But it is one of the best districts and believe me, I know so many and none, none really compare to ours. It's a home away from home. Those kindergartners will be forever in my heart. I was telling third and fourth and fifth graders that were really upset that I was retiring because I didn't tell them till the very end. And I'm giving them my Gmail because I'm gonna come to their graduation. Like, I promised them I would and they just got to tell me the date. But that's how dedicated your teachers are and that's how much we love our jobs. So, I want to thank you because you made our careers amazing, 27 years and I loved it. I loved it. It was hard, but it was well worth it. And also, I want to thank you too. You did a great job too in administration. I didn't mention your name. But everyone here is amazing. I feel like I can have an honest conversation and you listen to me and all this out and that's huge. So, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart and this is an amazing district. Thank you. Oh, there's someone else. No, I love it.
Could you come back for, you know, we have more new hires in the audience.
Amy, why don't you run on up here? So, Amy's an avid runner if you missed that joke. But Julie had to say that Amy's career spans many years at the intermediate level, teaching grades three and four. However, Amy began her career at Windermere as a teaching assistant, a cafeteria monitor and finally, where she is today, a master teacher. Amy has love for all students, no matter their background or ability. She has worked alongside a special education co-teacher for a majority of her career, helping to support children with special needs. Amy is kind, caring and a strong advocate for kids. She will do anything to make sure their needs are being met. Not only was she an outstanding educator, but she was a respected colleague by all. Congratulations, Amy, on your retirement.
So, first of all, thank you to the board that, I did start, I was only 20 years old. I got a job working the after-school program at Windermere while I was still in college. I didn't own a car. I used to run from the University Heights area every day to Windermere, run home in the middle of the winter. And Mr. Ball, who was the principal at the time, saw me in the hallway one day at the end of the year and he was like, "Hey, you want a job?" I'm like, "Okay." And he hired me as Pat Winovich's teaching assistant. And anybody who knows Pat knows she's like the mother Teresa of teaching. Like, she was the best. And I stayed with her for four years and then got my own classroom and I am just the luckiest person to have been in this community for so long. I've taught to Earth's kids, Windermere kids. And Windermere is just an incredible building. I wouldn't have gone anywhere else even if given the opportunity to. And I get to end my career with the co-teacher of all co-teachers, which is making this extremely difficult. You know, it should be all smiles and happy, but it's really touching the heart a little bit. And congratulations to my soon-to-be replacement. I hope you love it as much as I do. So, thank you.
Don't worry, Amy, I'm ready to step in and take your spot on the corporate challenge team. I'll be there. Yeah, no, I, I know, I'm making a mess of it. It's my bad. The, but Amy is an avid runner. You often see her in the paper for winning races.
Now we have a guitar.
And she likes to run. Congratulations. I often see her going down, for those of you that know Amherst, it has the Peanut Trail. And there's, you know, it connects on the other side of transit, it has the Clarence Bike Path. And then once you get to Grover's, and you come into Amherst, it's the Peanut Trail. And a few years ago, I built a patio that I like to relax on after work sometimes, when the weather permits, and I always see Amy going down.
I've never offered you a drink.
She's fast. But I'll tell you, I'll put a sign on the trail with an arrow, and there's a fridge out on the patio, you can help yourself. Because my walks down the Peanut Trail end at Quattler's. Sure, your runs are much more healthy or beneficial. But congratulations to all of you. I said at the beginning that every time we have this night, it's bittersweet, because I'm happy for our retirees that are moving into the next stage of their life, but I'm sad and I'm somewhat overwhelmed by the task of having to replace them in the classroom, or their offices, or the cafeterias, where they have done such great work for so long. So the next generation has big shoes to fill, and hopefully, they're carrying that torch forward and taking that responsibility seriously, because the people that came before you have done it at the highest level and have left big shoes for you to fill. So congratulations to all of you. I wish you nothing but health and happiness in retirement. If death lets me, I'd like to move on to the fund balance and reserves presentation of the superintendent's report. Since I screwed up the projector, we're going to have a little bit of time in transition here, which means if you're only here for the retiree recognition, you might want to make your way to the door, unless you're interested in how our fund balance projections are looking at the end of the year.
No offense, but no offense.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
I was waiting for the funds to millen- That was like so much fun. That's okay. Better, you know, that's all I'm hoping for.
Congratulations, CH.
Absolutely.
Right.
Congratulations.
So Mrs. Zinski is here to provide us with an update on how our year-end process is looking as far as our year-end balance is. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Tonight will be the first look we have at our fund balance and projections, our fund balance projections and reserves from year-end. Year-end is actually June 30th, so we will close the year and then move into our external audit. And then at our August meeting, we'll have some more definitive numbers. So tonight, we'll look at the projections, we'll talk about our reserves, where they are in relation to our long-range reserve plan, which was adopted by the board in December. And then we just have a small highlight for the alumni donations we received through the year, and then any questions? So first is our fund balance projection, which is the difference of our revenues and our expenditures in relation to where we started the year. So our budget for this year was 74.5 million. So that's our adopted budget, as well as any budget amendments that have taken place so far. So we had two areas of budget amendments. One was a $30,000 increase for the board that received from the assembly. And the other was a total of gifts and donations that the board approves regularly, as donations come into the district of about $33,000. Here to date, we receive almost $72 million, and we anticipate receiving another $5 million. Some of that is CDA, and then different revenues that are just either projected to come in late June, or that are accrued, because they don't come in until September, but they're attributed back to this fiscal year. So overall, our revenues will be about $2.4 million over what our budget was, which is about 3% differential from our original budget. The appropriated fund balance and reserves are the fund balance and reserve that we appropriated to balance this year's budget, as well as any carryover POs from the prior year that weren't closed out. We have the ability to carryover POs. If services aren't completed and payments haven't been made yet, or if items are ordered but not yet received yet, we carry those POs over so that we can make the payments in the next fiscal year without incurring those expenses in the next fiscal year. So overall, for our revenues, when you take the unappropriated fund balance, as well as the excess revenues that came in, we're about $526,000 to the positive. Then on the expenditure side, or the appropriation side, we have our budget of 76.4 million. Again, that includes any, our adopted budget, as well as our budget amendments. To date, we've spent about $65 million, and have just over $11 million pending. So that $11 million includes expenses that we believe we'll still spend. A large portion of that is the balloon payment for our payroll for teachers. So teachers have the ability to choose to withhold some of their pay throughout the year and get a large sum in June to help carry them through the summer. So our June payroll is usually five and a half to six million dollars. That also includes all of our pending POs, our POs that are on the books, that we don't get if they will be paid out in the next two weeks, or if we will carry them forward into next year. And then additionally, we have $1.5 million budgeted to be moved into the capital reserve. So without that $1.5 million transfer into capital, we would have about $1.54 thousand left this year, which is about 2% of our budget. So between revenues and expenditures, we're pretty close, between 2% and 3% on both sides of the budget. But the ability to expense that $1.5 million out of general fund in the capital fund supports the $3.2 million that we promised to the voters, that we would contribute to help reduce the local share of our current project. So assuming we transfer that money over, our net increase to our fund balance is $530,000. The fund balance this year was 10.2, so we take those revenues and expenditures, the $530 increase brings us to 10.7 million dollars for our total fund balance. So from there, we need to now look at our reserves and decide what we're going to do with that fund balance. This is the snapshot of our long-range reserve plan and what we decided and adopted in December. Each of our reserves, and then the potential increase or decrease is the maximum or recommended maximum that we would take in or remove from each reserve, not necessarily what we would do this year, but what each reserve could allow. As you can see, we have up to almost $11 million that we could transfer into reserves if we had that fund balance available, which would never happen in one year. But the largest portion of that is $8 million is the available amount that we can fund into capital reserve. So from there, we take a look at what we actually have and the amount that we can increase, where our reserves were at the beginning of the year, 10.2 million. Recommended changes for this year, which will happen after we close our books, which accounts for about $533,000, which would bring us up to the 10.7 million. In our long-range plan, we had decided that our unemployment reserve is a little overfunded. We're currently only spending about $5,000 a year in unemployment, if that. So the recommendation was to reduce that by 200,000. That would then leave us about 1.2 million that we could move into our reserves. 500,000 is recommended for the employee benefit improved liability, and another 750 for the capital projects. We're assuming that we're going to carry over 800,000 in purchase orders, which is an increase of 11,000 over last year. That is just a round number. We don't have that definitive number yet. And we would be reducing our unappropriated fund balance by just over 500,000. So last year, we are allowed to keep 4% of the next year's budget in unappropriated fund balance. This past year, we were over. We were at 3.6 million, which was about 4.8% of our fund balance. So to bring that into compliance this year, we can keep about 3.15 for next year. So that reduction of 527,000 would bring our unappropriated fund balance to 4.998%. So if we be in compliance, we have a little bit of money to move into some of our reserves, and we would have a total fund balance of 10.7 million dollars. So this is up for discussion. This is a board decision. These are our recommendations based on the activities of the district. We are in the middle of a large capital project. We know we're going to have more projects in the future, and starting to build that capital reserve helps reduce the local share and the impact on our taxpayers for future projects. We also know that we have a number of staff members who are at retirement age or nearing retirement age. So funding the EPLR reserve allows us to, in the future, increase our budget appropriations for any payments that they would receive on approved sick time, vacation time, or any retirement benefits that they would have as they retire. Any questions? So if the board is amenable to these moves, at least they are moving forward with them, Ms. Bostock has prepared for you tonight three resolutions that would need to be adopted prior to June 30th, but we would not make any changes to the reserves until we came back to talk to you in August. Education law requires the board to take action on these items as estimates, and then we come back to in August to make the movements prior to the final close of our fiscal year. So the recommendations are that we decrease 200,000 from the unemployment reserve, as the amount in there is in excess of what may be reasonably needed in the next 10 years. Increase the reserve for employee benefit improved liability. We put an amount of $1 million. We don't expect to have that much, but it gives us an up to amount, so we have some flexibility as our numbers become finalized, as well as an increase to the capital reserve of $2 million. Again, don't expect to have that much. Not making final decisions on numbers tonight, but need to have the resolutions in place to give us that flexibility. If there aren't any more questions about that, it could be the last slide. Just a thank you to the Alumni Association. Twice a year, they take grant requests from our teachers to fund extra initiatives and items for purchase or trips that our teachers would like, and they are very generous with donations. We received over $23,000 this year. These are some of the items that they funded during this fiscal year. Which helps contribute to that $23,000 we have some information to talk about earlier. So that is all, but if there are no questions or discussions or changes, these resolutions are presented to you to not be read.
I have the resolutions. I'll read them, but I want to pull the board and make sure you're okay with the recommendations. Mr. Beagle? Mrs. Erks? Is the mic?
So one of the things Mrs. Zinski mentioned in her presentation was that we, back when our capital project was approved in December of '22, we committed to other available funds that we would offer to offset the local share of the project cost for our taxpayers, and we committed $3.2 million. Tonight, I wanted to recognize the town of Amherst and Supervisor Culpa for providing us with a $200,000 check that we can use towards the project, specifically the addition at Windermere Boulevard Elementary School, to offset the tax burden of our taxpayers, and also contribute to the enhancement of the Windermere Boulevard community. The $200,000 was generated from a pilot project that was approved several years ago, where the Allenhurst and Princeton Fort apartments were renovated, and the owner of them was provided with a pilot agreement to be able to do that work. And PILOT stands for Payment in Rule of Taxes. So there was a tax break provided to that developer for that work. In addition, the town received a significant project in that neighborhood where they improved the sewage lines and the drainage lines, because there was often, when we had heavy rains flooding in that area, and those of you who have been in that area during heavy rain events would know that the storage system, or the sewage system and the storm system was not good. So that was improved as part of this agreement. And there was also an agreement that they would contribute towards our project to also enhance the neighborhood further. So I want to recognize the town board, as well as Supervisor Culpa, for that generous contribution to our capital project, which will offset an additional $200,000 of taxpayer responsibility for it. So many thanks to them. And that was worked into the project, or into the presentation as part of the 1.5 million that Mrs. Zinski indicated that would be expensed to our capital fund. Thank you.
So before I move to new business, we're adding three items under new business item one. So I'm going to read item K. Reduce the Unemployment Reserve Fund. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Amherst Central School District hereby directs that 200,000 be transferred from the district's unemployment reserve fund to the general fund of the district by operation of Education Law Section 3651, 1-A, and that the board hereby directs the administration to undertake all actions necessary to implement this resolution. That's item K. We're adding item L. Resolution to increase reserve for Employee Benefit Improved Liability Fund. Improve the transfer prior to the close of the 2023, 2024 fiscal year and within 60 days of the fiscal year-end, an amount up to, but not to exceed, $1 million from the general fund into the reserve for the Employee Benefit Improved Liability Fund. And then item M. Resolution Increase Capital Reserve 2021 Fund. Improve the transfer prior to the close of the 2023, 2024 fiscal year and within 60 days of the fiscal year-end, an amount up to, but not to exceed, $2 million from the general fund into the Capital Reserve 2021 Fund. So those would be added to new business item E1. So we would add E1, A through M. So I will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items E1, A through M, 2, B, C, D, and E, and 3, A, B, C, E, H.
We have a second. Mr. Beagle? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items E1, A through M, 2, B through E, and 3, A, B, C, E, and H, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries by zero. I'd like to welcome to new team members. I hear in the audience tonight, if you wouldn't mind, I see we have Erin Rowland, and if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, I apologize. Allison Ewer. I would, we would love to have you just stand, tell us what you're going to do, where you're going to be, and introduce yourself to us.
Hi, Allison Ewer. I'm going to be at Windermere Boulevard as a third grade teacher. I'm going to be taking my stuff and leaving. Big shoes to fill, I know, I know. But I'm very excited. I love this school.
Hi, I'm Erin Rowland. I'm going to be at Amherst Middle School in the seventh grade. I'll be a co-teacher on the special education side with Mr. Mussalino.
Fantastic. We put this presentation on just for you two tonight, to see how wonderful we are.
Big shoes to fill.
Is there Angelina Simon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm Angelina Simon. I'm an alumni of Amherst.
I'm an alumni of Amherst. I graduated in 2015 and I will be in kindergarten at Windermere.
Angelina, I'm sorry they didn't give you that you were here soon.
She's stuck in the loop.
I did. I was kindergarten orientation.
Well, welcome to the team as well.
Thank you.
And welcome back, I guess.
Proud to be back.
We have quite a few of those. All right, with that, I still, since Tony started ahead of time, I wanted to honor Mrs. Ernst, whose last meeting is tonight. She has been on the board for 12 years and she's, I was fortunate enough to run with Mrs. Ernst four times, always joking that Mrs. Ernst was a juggernaut, that she knows more people in Amherst having been, you know, not growing up here than anyone I know. And outpulled anyone that was running with her, even when she wasn't in town during Election Day. She has been a great mentor to me during her time with the leadership on the board. I will greatly miss you on the board. So congratulations to you that you get to get off the board at some point. I stupidly am staying on for another three years, so. But I've enjoyed my time as well here, so I'm joking. But congratulations to you. We wanna give you, come on up here, cause you know. Get you a nice crystal apple as well. And a nice little token gift we have for you as well. So you get to say a few words as well.
I don't really have much to say.
Yes, you do.
No, but it was fun seeing a lot of the teachers here tonight that my kids have had the honor of being taught by. I mean, I would say when my son Callum was in, this wasn't supposed to happen. When Callum was three, he started at Windermere through Gornhalla because he couldn't talk. And he had speech five days a week, OT, PT, the whole works. And now Callum's in college. He's gonna be a senior this year. And it's all because of the teachers that he had at Windermere.
He does a lot of great TikTok sports videos, you know.
Yeah, he would like that to be his future, but it's not. Anyway, I really like, we are so lucky that we moved into the Amherst School District and I'm thankful that I was able to go back a little bit, but we got so much out of this district and I really appreciate it all.
You get it.
I've been fortunate enough to have Jean as a board member my entire career as superintendent so far in Amherst and I will certainly miss her guidance, her support, her unwavering focus on what's best for kids, her advice, her parenting advice, her advice on being a leader. She has been an amazing person to work with and I will certainly miss you and miss seeing you twice a month at board meetings, but don't be a stranger. Congratulations. Back to you. Cheers.
Does anybody follow up action items?
No.
All right, we're gonna let Mrs. Ernst make the final motion of her board career. We need a motion to convene to executive session.
We need to make a motion to convene to executive session regarding employment of a particular person.
We have a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.